Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectment, Wednesday, February 22, 2023. It is 6:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall. You may join the meeting via Zoom. Meeting ID is 814-1807-8041. The passcode is 535858. You may also phone in at 1-646-931-3860. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Prior to the meeting, contact the office at the Board of Selectmen at dyton-ma.gov or via Zoom call-in number provided earlier. Continued play of this meeting will be on Dyton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This time, I will call the order.
Ken Pacheco, present.
PD Karen, present.
Chairman Leonard Hall, present. Could we stand for both the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for two Dyton members who have passed since our last meeting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Since our last meeting, two Dyton residents have passed. Sister Talia Geraldo, 97 years old, a member of the Dominican Sisters of the Presentation at the Novitiate on Elm Street in Dyton, and also sudden passing of Chairman of the Dyton Sewer Commission, Paul Jolly, at the age of 80 years old. Our thoughts and condolences to their family. If you look at the agenda, Officer Duddy will not be present this evening. He's asked us if we could have it in March at our next meeting. And with that being said, I would like to, I know he's here somewhere, Chief Cronin, to come to the podium. I can tell by the number of people present this evening that Nicholas Barrows is held in high esteem, and this evening he'll be promoted to the rank of Sergeant. So I will give you the opportunity to speak praises upon him, and I believe the clerk will be swearing him in, or is it the chief? No?
Good to go.
The chief and the board, but they promote Officer Barrows, he doesn't need to be sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board. So as you mentioned, we are here tonight to promote Nick Barrows. Back in the winter, spring of 2022, we held a promotional exam per the contractual elements of the agreement. So Nick came out very well. He actually did incredible on the Assessment Center, did well on the whole procedure, and he is the next eligible to be promoted. As you can see, he's got a pretty good following here tonight, and I share the feeling of having a nice supportive family that backs you in this profession. It's not easy, and by the amount of officers here, it's a testament to your character and to what you bring to us and what you're going to continue to bring to us. So thank you, everybody, for being here for him. That's very important, and I appreciate that. So Nick's been with us, I'm going to use the term "on and off." Nick started with us quite a few years ago in a reserve capacity. He had the opportunity to go to Rehoboth PD in a full-time capacity, and we were lucky enough to get him back in our ranks. And since then, Nick has, in my opinion, Nick always goes further than he needs to. He's taken on field training officer responsibilities. He's one of our highest traffic guys. His demeanor is usually very calm, and which now, the way our training is, Nick's already kind of got that built into him. Nick can diffuse things pretty well. He can talk to people on their level, and it's nice to watch him work, actually. So with that, Nick, why don't you come on up? Your parents here?
Yeah.
Is it okay to pin them?
Certainly.
All right. Congratulations on becoming a sergeant. You're going to be getting some more responsibilities.
Look forward to it.
Losing all that weight, you're going to need to buck up a little bit. Congratulations, pal. Mom, Dad, you want to come up? Who do you want?
I guess Mom.
Yeah?
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. It's a Kodak moment.
Photo point.
Go on, Nick. More pics. More pics, probably, right? Jump light. Karen, are you still plugged in?
Yeah. Thank you.
So serious.
Thank you.
Just so we have it in the record, too, like I do recommend that the board vote to approve the promotion.
We will, we will. In a minute. Sergeant Barrows is joined this evening by his parents, John and Maria, and also by his beauvais, who in December celebrated her 100th birthday. Sergeant Barrows comes highly recommended by the chief, who mentioned that he performed well above the standard during both the testing and assignment phases, and was by rank on the eligibility list next in line for promotion. His even keel demeanor, calmness, and ability to make rational decisions are characteristics that are vital to being a police supervisor. He has earned the respect of his colleagues and embraced the role of a field training officer over the past few years. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the promotion of Sergeant Barrows to the Dyton Police Department.
I'll make that motion and make it effective February 22, today.
Motion made in second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hall, is an aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda this evening, our town clerk, Mark Pacheco, signing of the annual town election warrant and request for police details at the town election. Mr. Pacheco, please.
Yeah, I have in front of you tonight the 2023 Annual Town Election Warrant. Not much to say on it.
Are there any questions from members of the board?
No.
Are there any rule changes this year with elections, especially with COVID kind of in the rearview mirror?
No, no.
Are there any restrictions that the voters should know that are coming on Election Day?
Well, that doesn't have to do with the warrant, but we won't have public bathrooms at the elementary school.
There won't be public bathrooms?
No, there won't.
Well, in this public meeting, and hopefully those people that are listening or watch when it's recorded, will get the information.
Right.
I appreciate that. Also, while I have you here, is it correct that on Friday, the day, April 7, that Town Hall or Old Town Hall will be open?
It'll be Town Hall.
Town Hall will be open for early voting.
Yeah, early voting by absentee, and there will be an announcement forthcoming on that.
She can use the ramp.
Can use the ramp.
She can use the ramp.
Sorry, Mom.
No, that's fine. That's worth it.
And what will be the time for that? The early voting?
I want to announce that, I think we did it till, we did 7:30 to 12:00 last year, but I want to make sure with the Votes Act that didn't change, so I haven't announced it yet, but I will, and I will give it to you guys, so you can put it on your announcements. But I haven't announced that yet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the Town of Dyton qualified to vote in elections to meet at the Dyton Elementary School for Precincts 1, 2, and 3 on Saturday, the 8th of April, 2023, commencing at 7:00 AM. And the polls will close at what time?
5:00.
5:00 PM. On the ballot, the following officers: Selectman for three years, Town Moderator for one year, Assessor for three years, two three-year members for the Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School District Committee, one year position for the Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School District Committee, Planning Board Member for five years, Public Library Trustee for three years, Parks and Recreation Commissioner for three years, Sewer Commissioner for three years, Housing Authority Member for five years. We have to vote this in to the record. Is that correct? Are there any questions?
There is a question about, there is early voting, correct?
There'll be a day of absentee early voting, yes, but it hasn't been announced yet, so I will announce it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just think the public needs to, what do you mean by absentee?
So you can, you can vote absentee up until...
So it actually won't be a poll open?
It was called over-the-counter voting is the term, so you can vote over the counter.
And who's eligible to get that ballot?
Any person that would normally be eligible for absentee, so someone who can't make it on Election Day due to work or being out of town or religious reason or for disability. It was till noon, you can, the deadline is noon the day prior to the election, but I just want to, you know, I double-check things before I announce it, so that's why it hasn't been announced.
Sure, so there's no early mail?
No, no.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, any questions?
No.
I will entertain a motion to approve the request of the signing of the annual town election warrant.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. The second on the agenda in regards to the town clerk is police details for the annual town election. In 2022, the election reform laws, the Votes Act, were signed into law. The Votes Act makes many of the changes from the pandemic permanent, one of them being the assignment of police officers at polling places now requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen. Town of Dyton has three voting precincts, all of which use the Dyton Elementary School for their polling location. I am requesting three offices for the April 8, 2023 election. We generally have two offices, but in my experience, this is no longer sufficient. We had issues both inside and outside the general election and issues at the last annual town election. Public safety, both inside and outside, the election is a priority, and I request a police officer outside moving forward to make sure the school grounds are safe. There is enough funding in the police detail budget line for my department. Are there any discussion on this matter?
Yes, I have a question or two. As you know, as you pointed out, there was issues at the annual town election a year ago, and you had represented to us when you were looking for police officers for early voting, that, I know there were some complaints brought to your attention, I was one of those that made a complaint, in asking the people who were outside to be 150 feet away from the polling, and that didn't happen. They still remained closer. And you indicated that you informed the police officers there to do that, but they hadn't done that. So what's to prevent that from happening now? And if that happens again, I would hope you'd call that man over there, the chief, and let him know that the officers aren't pushing the people back. People shouldn't be harassed when they're going to vote. It's a sacred duty of every citizen, and I get upset when I hear that people are being harassed, as we did at the, not the annual town election, but I know of what happened at the state election, that people were harassed. People shouldn't have to have that happen to them.
I agree with you.
So I'm not opposed to three police officers, I'll make that clear, but I want to make sure that if they've been asked by you to move people back or if they're harassing voters, that that be addressed. And if it's not being addressed by the officers, that the chief be notified of that. I think it's very important that people feel safe going to vote. I don't care who they're voting for, but they have that right to vote, and I'm sure you believe in the same thing, too.
I do, of course, yeah. I do remember your comments, though, the last time when we had this vote, as Mr. Hall said, a recent meeting that was controversial, and you had a little bit of a different tone, where you basically said, you know, there were issues at the last election, why would more police officers make it better? So your tone's changed a little bit tonight, I appreciate it.
It's changed.
And I do agree with you, we need more police officers, and I can't know everything that's going on in the polls. I found out a lot of things after the fact. Our police officers have so many responsibilities on Election Day, including the custody of the ballot boxes, so to pull police officers away from that is unfair to the police officers.
That's why you're asking for three.
It's unfair to myself, too. So to have a police officer outside, they can really be our eyes and ears on the ground. They're trained on the 150-foot rule, that a lot of them have done elections, we talk about it beforehand. So the 150-foot rule's not a surprise. I'm hoping having a police officer outside will prevent those issues from kind of escalating inside, and of course, we do not want to prevent a voter from being intimidated from the polls or being harassed. We want them to come out and vote on Election Day, so...
Just for clarification on my position, I'm not changing my position, that was for, if you remember, early voting is going to cost the town $8,000 for the early voting, not Election Day. Clearly, Election Day, a lot more people come into the polls, so I'm going to support the three police officers, and I agree, having an officer outside permanently is a good idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen, any questions?
How much is it going to cost to add a third officer?
It's a 10-hour shift, so let's say they're getting $45 an hour.
It's a lot of money.
So is the liability if something happens to the town?
Absolutely. How long have you been a clerk?
Two years, and I've seen the volatility increase in the two years, the rivalries increase, the hostility increase.
One of the things about this year is a lot of uncontested positions, and I wonder if there's going to be as many people coming out to vote as in the past.
I'm thinking we just need to adapt with the times, and it's just a sign of the times on how things have changed, and we funded it, you know, we have money in it. Let's not take the liability, and let's not put...
I don't know if there's so much a liability. Just because you have the money in the budget doesn't mean it has to be spent, and it's in the police budget, not in...
No, it's in my budget.
Oh, I thought, here you say there is enough money funding in the police detail budget.
I have a police detail budget.
Last November, I am aware that there were problems outside, and what was most troubling is that a state representative who has been very helpful to this town faced some of that harassment and problems out there. That does not look good for the Town of Dyton, and it certainly doesn't show a lot of respect for Pat Hadad, who has done a lot for this community. So I will be voting in favor of the three officers. The only thing that I ask, and I don't know if this is allowed by the union, could one of the three officers be a supervisor or somebody on a sergeant rank?
So it could be?
Or could it, a sergeant just pass through to make sure everything is...
So one or two things can happen, it's okay, Mark. One or two things can happen. The way that the detailed jobs go out, it's all by bid, it's not complicated to us, but for somebody looking in, it's fairly complicated. If a supervisor isn't one of the three officers, I will make sure that there is a supervisor that does roll through.
Great, thank you. That being said, I will entertain a motion to approve Town Clerk Mark Pacheco's request of three officers for the April 8, 2023 election.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Kevin Smith, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, to give an update on CPC funding. There have been many questions, some misinformation that has been out there, and we will periodically have members of the Library Committee, the Clerk of the Works, James Agia, and Mr. Smith come before us to set the record straight and to also, for the sake of transparency, letting the voters know clearly what they will be voting for at the town meeting in June. With that being said, Mr. Smith, could you review with us CPC funding and the funding request of $323,000 that the Library Building Committee has made to your board?
Gladly. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'll start off by, and you have our funding sheet in front of you, I sent it over to Leanne, so it was part of the package. So our first line item, and not much has changed since I met with you, I think it was two or three weeks, two weeks ago? So our totals haven't changed, but I do have some additional information to add to our balances. So in the first line, under our unreserved, undesignated fund balance, we have a balance in that account of $329,346.51. I did have a meeting yesterday with the town accountant and the town treasurer just to make sure that our balances were correct and to talk a little bit more about how or what frequency funds enter our account from the 1% surcharge from the property taxes. So we have, we have revenue that is received but hasn't been reconciled by the town treasurer yet, so we actually have an additional $10,552, which is part of a state match from the Community Preservation Coalition Trust Fund, that we physically have it, it's just not shown in our balance until the accounts get reconciled. That was received on January 3 of 2023, and in talking to the town treasurer, too, they had just finished up the month of November's revenues, and they're working towards, moving towards December and January, so we'll actually see that reflected in our balance shortly. Another revenue that was received on January 4 of 2023, there was $12,500, which is a reimbursement for the completion of the historical survey, Phase 1. That, again, we physically have the money, but it's not shown in the balance, that will actually be reflected in the Historical Resources Fund, because we funded that project exclusively using the Historical Resources category. So that shows a balance currently of $23,376.87, but then when you add in the 12.5, the true balance of that account is $35,876.87, so there is a little bit of additional funds there. The open space and community housing columns, so open space has $53,376.87, that's stable and everything's confirmed, there isn't anything being taken from or put into that account at this time, and the same with the $38,376.87, $386,376.87 for community housing, that is also a stable figure as well for that category. One other line item that you'll note is, there's a separate line item that says "budgeted" for $82,500. So at annual, last year's annual town meeting, we have a warrant article that designates 10% into each of our possible categories and 5% into our professional and technical to have, to pay for our clerk of our committee and other, you know, office needs. So that $82,500 actually represents the additional funding outside of funding the three categories at 10% and the 5% for our clerk. So we, and that money is actually, we physically have that money, but it, and it will, once the books close for this fiscal year, get rolled into our unreserved, undesignated balance. So with that being said, the $329,346.51 balance is actually much lower than what the true balance is of that account. When you add in the $82,500 and the $10,552, the true, undesignated reserve fund balance for the Community Preservation Committee is $422,398.51.
No.
And it's, that's all strictly just kind of accounting procedure that's going to kind of change how those numbers are reflected.
I attended the CPC presentation the other night, and there was a discussion in regards to the boat ramp that I haven't heard you speak about, and I believe that adds another $50,000 to your total, if the town votes to return it.
In a way, it does. So that eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars actually represents the additional funding, outside of funding the three categories of ten percent and the five percent for our clerk. So we, and that money is actually, we physically have that money, but it, and it will, once the books close for this fiscal year, get rolled into our unreserved, undesignated balance. So, with that being said, the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-one cent balance is actually much lower than what the true balance is of that account. When you add in the eighty-two thousand, five hundred and the ten thousand, five fifty-two, the true undesignated reserve fund balance for the Community Preservation Committee is four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Now...
And it's, that's all strictly just kind of accounting procedure that's going to kind of change how those, those numbers are reflected.
I attended the CPC presentation the other night. And there was a discussion in regards to the boat ramp that I haven't heard you speak about, and I believe that adds another fifty thousand to your total, is that cor- if the town votes to return it?
In a way it does. So that, that project there, there was, the project total was fifty thousand dollars. Thirty-five thousand of that was from the unreserved fund, and fifteen thousand was from the open space fund. At some point, eighteen hundred dollars was expended from that, and this, that, so that was annual town meeting of two thousand nineteen. I would have, we'll have to do a little research in some of the, you know, physical records that we have in town hall, but I would assume at some point, maybe a survey was done of the property that was in question. But I, we do not know a whole lot at this time about the project, why it was stopped. Mr. Woods, who was a prior CPC member, did shine a little bit light, of light on how there was a piece of land to be purchased and the deal fell through. I've also contacted the State Community Preservation Coalition to make sure that we follow the proper protocols as far as they are concerned with returning or making the attempt to return this money to the respective accounts at, at town meeting.
Now, would you say respective accounts or account?
Accounts, plural. So, say, if we wrote in warrant articles and stating that this project is canceled and we'd like to return the funds to the CPC balances, minus the eighteen hundred, but just to make it simple, thirty-five thousand would go back into the undesignated account and fifteen thousand would go back into open space. It needs to go back to where it came from. And the same thing goes for a couple of the, as you heard, we have been given project updates. The two parks projects that are almost completed have a little bit of, you know, extra funds that weren't expended as part of the project. So we're also gonna, I'm discussing that with the state as well to see if we do need to write a warrant article to return those funds or if we can simply just, you know, the project's completed, we have extra, if it can just go back without going through.
And there is a specific parks and recreation account in CPC, or would that go into the general?
Parks goes, so parks technically falls under open space, but to, to, it's kind of dual faceted. So the North Dayton Playground Project was funded exclusively from the undesignated reserve. There wasn't any money pulled from the open space fund. But the North Dyton Ball Field Fencing and Lighting Project, there was a portion of it pulled from the open space account and a portion of it pulled from undesignated reserve. So you, we have to do a little bit of math there to see, we use this percentage of money so then to, you know, treat it fairly, we would break down those percentages and put that percentage, the remaining, split it and put it back into the two respective accounts that it came from.
Do you have any projects that are in the pipeline that, that have already been discussed in the future?
So we have projects that are in the works, and those are represented in our... So you'll see about halfway down the sheet where you see the playground expenses, the consultant, phase one, survey phase two. Those are represented in that right-hand column, so that, that is what we have actively being used of CPC money, but it is not ref, but it doesn't affect the undesignated reserve or any of the categories. All that money has been moved into separate accounts, so it's not affecting those balances. And so part, I guess the biggest part of the CPC is we have representatives, like besides being the chair, I'm also the representative from Parks, Parks and Rec, so I do recreation and open space. We have Mr. Pruitt, who represent the historical, Mr. Didgets, who represents conservation, Mr. Higgins, who represents the planning board, and Mr. Fontaine, who represents the housing authority. It is our duty to let each other know that we have projects coming down the pipeline so that we can forecast what we can spend versus what, you know, future projects that may happen. At this time, none of us have reported any additional projects that will be coming before the CPC.
In the general account?
In any account. So with part of the way that this all works, actually, the only other project that I do know of is Jeff Covall from the Trails Committee is looking for some, and we're going to actually visit him after we get through the two oh seven Main Street project, because it's not, the time is not really of the essence on his project. So he has an ask for Trails Committee study, and it's, there's a grant from the state, but you need to provide some matching funds. So that ask was for nineteen thousand dollars. So when that comes before the CPC, the CPC makes the decision, do we want to take that money out of the unreserved balance, or do we want to take it out of open space? I mean, I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole committee, but when you have fifty-three thousand dollars sitting in open space and no other projects coming down the pipeline, you would pull, it would make the most sense to pull that money out of there and not affect your undesignated, unreserved account.
Now, every year you get, what, eighty-two thousand dollars in tax money?
No, so typically, the surcharge, the one percent surcharge is in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So last year, our total surcharge was a hundred and twenty-six, just to give a square number, was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, and that was just from, you know, property taxes. That is, you know, a pretty solid, that's always going to be a pretty solid number, and, you know, obviously when taxes go up or if they go, property taxes go up or go down, it's going to fluctuate some, but it's not a huge...
When do you get that?
That gets paid continuously throughout the year. So as people pay their property taxes quarterly, those, and I do, I do have that question out to the town treasurer, because I'm assuming, you know, every time somebody sends in their bill, he's not depositing thirty-five dollars at a time into the CPC account that's probably, you know, an accumulative balance, and then he moves it over as he's reconciling the books. But as, you know, our tax bills go out quarterly, when taxes are collected, that money is continuously growing in our account throughout the year, so it's not, you know, set up specifically at any segment of time.
All right. Now, you have a proposal before you for three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yes.
And it is also my understanding that the library people have written a grant that if they receive it, would actually be returned to you, is that correct?
Correct, so...
So that would drop that three twenty-three number to?
One twenty-three.
One twenty.
So, in their proposal, there was a two hundred and four thousand dollar ask, which was going to cover the HVC improvements for the building. And then the Library Building Committee also through Mass Cultural Council applied for a grant amounting two hundred thousand dollars. And they made that clear in their proposal last week that if they are awarded that grant, what they're going to do is that money will be returned to this, they're going to amend their proposal to the CPC. So come town, if the CPC decides to move forward on this project, whether or not, I don't, I'm not sure of the timeline of when that, the announcement of that grant being awarded is, but when it comes time for town, if it gets through CPC and it passes, when we get to town meeting, we're going to amend that, the motion on the warrant article to reflect that we'll, instead of, you know, three twenty-three, it would be one twenty-three.
One twenty-three.
Correct. And then they'll revise and come back to us with, you know, possibly an additional ask to kind of further the work. And we'll revisit at special town meeting.
Now, you may have an allocation of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And if that grant would have passed, this money would all go into the unreserved account, correct?
Well, so we can, I, just to kind of throw it out there, we can fund this in a couple of different ways. We can take it entirely from the, the, the undesignated, unreserved, or we could take, just for instance, we could take thirty-five thousand from historical and take two hundred and eighty-eight thousand from undesignated reserve. We can, we'll write that warrant article to reflect how we think it should be funded. So it doesn't have to come from all, just for instance, the North Dayton Playground and Lighting, and even that boat ramp project, you'll see that it's, it's common practice for you to take, you know, a small piece out of the designated fund and then the rest from the undesignated.
In the unreserved account, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, how much money will you have after, if it does pass?
So, just to give that example, because I did break this down well, right before the meeting. It, and this is strictly hypothetical, this is something that we'll, we'll, we'll have to discuss in the meeting. But, for instance, if we chose to go that route and use thirty-five thousand from the historical and then the two hundred and eighty-eight from the undesignated reserve, that would leave us with a balance of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
And that's before you get the next allotment from the Commonwealth and taxes?
Correct.
Okay.
And additionally, well, yeah, so that takes into account the adding in the eighty-two, five, the ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-two. And so, the one percent surcharge that we collect locally is accumulative throughout the year. Our matching funds come to us in November, so we won't see any matching funds from the state. And that's, that's based off of the registry of deeds. So the more deeds that are recorded, the more the Community Preservation Coalition...
So that's additional money?
That is additional.
So do you have a ballpark of how much money that will be?
So last year, we, we did really well where we got an initial... Right, thirty, twenty, twenty-eight and change?
Yeah, it was just about thirty thousand.
Yeah, so just about thirty thousand, and then in December, they sent us an additional, so there was a additional funding of ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-two. That is not typical. That's because the Community Preservation Coalition lobbied before the State House and, and they dedicated an additional twenty million to help CPA communities.
So, if my math is correct, if you fund this project, worst-case scenario, you will have in reserve, in the unreserved balance, with no projects in the pipeline, of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, is that correct? When you add the hundred and twenty-five thousand extra you will get in the new fiscal year and approximately thirty thousand from the state for the registry of deeds?
So, no, that, I wouldn't use those numbers because, one, like I said, it's, our local surcharge is accumulative throughout, so that's slowly growing throughout the year. It's not like, you know, when our fiscal year turns, we get this big lump sum. So that's kind of, it slowly trickles in. And then the state is completely volatile, because, so we usually get a certain percentage based on our surcharge of matching funds, but it's entirely driven by the registry of deeds. So right now, the housing market is, has settled down, the, you know, they're not recording, so that's, that's essentially, that's where your deed fees go when you record your deed, when you buy, sell, or refinance house.
But you have no projects in the pipeline, and correct me if I'm wrong, you have the ability to tell applicants to come back in the spring if you don't have enough in reserve in the fall, is that correct?
So the way that we've kind of moved to model the CPC now is to allow for year-round requests. Typically, before, there was kind of an open and closed period, but I think it makes more, well, we decided collectively that it makes more sense to allow folks to visit us for fall special town meeting, because sometimes the funding of the project is of the essence. For instance, with what's proposed to us, the only, the only other ask that's in the pipeline from the Trails Committee for nineteen thousand, that's something that needs to be addressed and fund, if we choose to fund it, it needs to be funded by, you know, the no, the timeline of around November, when we typically have our special town meeting.
Where I'm going with this is there is a misperception out there, and it has been stated publicly and on social media, that if the CPC funds this project, worst-case scenario is three hundred and twenty-three thousand, and that's the numbers we've run so far, we haven't talked about the best-case scenario, that there'll be no money left in the CPC. Or it will leave you in a position where you won't be able to grant requests, especially where you don't have any in the pipeline right now.
So keep this in mind. So again, worst-case scenario, if we, if we chose to fund this completely, that would drop our unreserved, undesignated balance to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight.
And best-case scenario?
Best-case scenario, I, I think, to give the best-case scenario, is if the grant is awarded, instantly add, so now we're back up to three hundred and thirty-four.
Thank you.
Also, I just want to add, it is going to deplete if we chose to go this route, which I kind of used as an example. It will deplete the historic resources, but will also, at, at, at annual town meeting, with our normal warrant article, twelve thousand, five hundred is going to go back into the account, twelve thou- and so open space becomes sixty-five thousand, historical will go back to twelve-five, community housing will go back to, call it fifty-five thou, fifty-five thousand. So there is designated funds for all those other categories, even if we fund this project.
Now, as I look at CPC funding request of three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, I notice that the funding is for the interior, for the most part, including installation of ramps, which is exterior.
So no, there is two proposed ramps in the project, one interior to get to the stage and one exterior to get into the building. The proposal that is before us only covers the interior ramp to the stage for the proposed children's area.
Now, and I want, if I could add to that, we've applied for a grant for the ramp, so it's possible, it's a possibility for the grant inside, that might be covered by a grant. The ramp on the outside has already been funded by the taxpayer, the money that's already been funded, so the ramp's going to be, it's not part of this, the exterior ramp is not part of this.
Yeah, there is, there was an additional grant that the library, Jocelyn, our librarian, and Jonathan, our ADA coordinator, did apply for, that could be applied to the ramp and other technologies kind of down the road. And then you guys had a pretty in-depth discussion about the interior of the library, so their grant could fund that ramp, plus, you know, technology features for the actual library itself. I mean, for all intensive purposes, as far as the CPC is concerned, this is a historical resource for the town. The Board of Selectmen chose to purchase it, and it's our duty to decide whether or not we can fund to make the improvements, to make it a public, accessible, and somewhat energy-efficient building. As far, what's been presented to us is really not a library plan. It's a accessible, functioning, public building that the town owns.
Now, with that being said, we have the funding for the exterior, and it is progressing, and I have been told there is money to finish the exterior. And if the CPC, and it is approved at town meeting, gives us the money for the interior, my next question is Mr., is to, Mr. Mullen. Mr. Mullen?
Yes, sir.
Will Mr. Agia be able to issue an occupancy permit for the library based on the completion of this work as funded by the CPC? If you're not sure, we can have Mr. Agia at the next meeting answer that question.
Well, we're also, if I could answer that, we're also seeking funds from capital stabilization fund for the interior also. So, if it's just on CPC, it won't be approved, because that's not enough money to complete it. But we need both of those, and we can't speak for the building commissioner, but he's been involved in this from day one, and I'm sure he will, if everything is done the way it's supposed to be, it'll be...
Part of the grand picture too, as I perceive it, is if, and we're appreciative of the, of the gesture of giving, if they're awarded the grant for the HVC, giving that back to the CPC, and then presenting another proposal. So in a perfect world, if it all works out, the grant is awarded. Additionally, if they come back to the CPC, we do, we have the ability and choose to fund an additional request. That also reduces the amount of ask against capital stabilization as well, just to kind of throw that out there.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, any questions?
No, you've covered everything.
No, just want to add, so the, the public knows, the CPC funds, we've already paid our taxes for that. This isn't like additional taxes that the residents are going to pay. This is money that we pay one percent of our taxes, the ghost towers, historic buildings, open space, and other things. So this isn't additional money, and if we have to go to stabilization, that's our rainy day fund. As you know, Mr. Chairman, we're both, and I believe Mr. Karen is big advocates, putting our free cash every November, putting free cash in the stabilization funds, and we've been doing that right along. I think we put quite a lot this past fall. So it's for projects like this, it's a rainy day fund so that taxpayers don't get an additional burden on their taxes. So I just wanted to throw that.
That is one possibility. I'm sure we can look and there might be other possibilities.
I'd like to add, as far as the CPC is concerned, because again, with the kind of the things that we're hearing and the things that we're seeing on social media is, the CPC is actually extremely limited in the projects that it can fund. I think when I presented to you a couple of months ago, the, our new application process, and we went through the slides and the categories of what is and isn't eligible, it's a very small window. You know, things like what we have been doing, the playground. I don't foresee us, you know, doing another playground of that size like in the immediate future. And then the historic, the historical asks have been smaller, things like the surveys and the historical commission has done an excellent job of seeking grant money and getting, you know, fifty percent reimbursement on their projects. So that, kind of, everybody's been taking care of their funding source to make sure that we can continue to do the projects as we've been doing them all along.
Thank you. Mrs. Gulat had a question. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to fill in some blanks. You must will stay.
Okay.
The eighteen hundred dollars that was expended was to pay for an easement on Boat Ramp Road. The easement on the other side of that road went through negotiations. The trustee for the owner of the property rejected the amount that the appraiser said the easement was worth. I can't go any further on this in open session because of potential litigation. But I would like, when you schedule an executive session, I think we should discuss this and Mr. Ferry should be here. So that's what that money is for. I would not put it back anywhere, I'd leave it right where it is. The other thing I would ask you is, if that money were put back, you're kissing away the Boat Ramp project that initially, when it was offered to us, was over five hundred thousand dollars worth of state money. The gentleman that brought that to us met with us and said, you've got to expand parking down at the, on Boat Ramp Road. That's why we were trying to get easements. So before anything happens to that money that's been set aside, there needs to be a meeting. You need to be brought up to speed on what took place. And you decide what action you're going to take. But that five hundred thousand, I'm sure by now is probably worth more than that. And we've got plans and everything. And if you've ever been down to the Somerset waterfront, that was funded similarly. I'm not saying ours is going to be that big, but that'll give you an idea.
Thank you.
As far as the funding, it comes in when we pay our taxes. So I'm thinking it's probably quarterly, there are deposits made. But you also need to know, from an assessor's standpoint, if we give somebody abatements of something, the CPC pot also gets abated. So we giveth and we taketh away, not in large amount of money, but because it's related to the taxes, if an abatement is given, that happens, okay?
That makes sense.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So actually, just to add on to that, so we do our CP1 form with the assessor's office. And it does, I think the abatements were somewhere in the area of eighteen hundred dollars. So that one-twenty-six figure is our typical, or in the area of our typical surcharge that we're collecting. And then it does reflect the abatements, which is a very small portion.
I think we might have a couple of abatements we have to look at because we had some today and we needed a little more information. And that could result in, if we grant those, a further reduction, but we're not talking a lot of money, but it does happen.
No, thank you.
As far as the Boat Ramp goes, I think we need to have almost a joint meeting between Parks and Rec and the Board of Selectmen because as far as I'm told and as far as it's listed on our town website, the Boat Ramp, for some reason, falls under Parks and Recreation.
Yes, it does. And I've heard all kinds of things about the need for the Corps of Engineers to be involved. So I, just for the sake of gathering information, whenever we could meet, I mean, you don't have to make a decision until June.
I would say, when, just, and this is my kind of personal opinion, is when a project has gone this long without being addressed, let's return the money back and if the project comes back up, somebody can revisit us and ask for it again because, you know.
I like your logic, but I want to hear all the pieces before we make a decision.
Absolutely. Mrs. Gulat has some information on it, I believe Mr. Woods has some, so maybe we can collectively figure out what's going on with the Boat Ramp. I, to step out of my CPC shoes and into my Parks and Rec shoes, from a Parks and Recs standpoint with a, you know, roughly twenty thousand dollar area budget, let's like figure out a way to get the state involved because it's saltwater, it's, you know.
How soon do you need this money, if you needed it back into CPC, putting back on the CPC app? Do you need it for the June meeting or is it something that could wait for the fall meeting?
Oh, no, it could wait. I think it's just a way to make sure that we're bolstering that undesigned reserve. I think, given, you know, back to our worst-case scenario of sitting, of having a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three ninety-eight, we're in no major rush to get it back. We've just been, we've been regularly giving project updates at our CPC meetings for this very reason because we don't want money sitting out there with no one being accountable for the project and not having the funds available if we need them somewhere else.
Well, we've entered budget season, this poor gentleman here is working day and night. So I'd like to give him a little break and we could maybe visit in the summer, if that works for all parties.
I mean, I, again, back to, jump into my parks, I have no desire to like, you know, jump right on top of the Boat Ramp. It's like kind of an old, like, myth at this point.
Mr. Smith, thank you so much. I know you did the same presentation the other night for CPC, but I want the voters to get the full view.
No, I'm happy to give the presentation, but try to move the CPC to be, you know, as transparent as possible, so I'm happy to do it. Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This evening, you and Mr. James Holland will be doing a presentation on the Greater Attleboro-Tonton Home Consortium. And I'll let you introduce Mr. Holland and the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're here because Chairman Hull heard me talking about attending a recent, we call it GATHIC, meeting. And he was asking about it. To give you a little bit of history, when I came to the board in two thousand fifteen, Selectment Pie has said to me, this is an important committee, Dyton is represented on it, I believe he was the representative. And he said, we shouldn't let that go. He said, so you should volunteer to be the representative for the town of Dyton. So I have been involved with it since two thousand fifteen or sixteen, whenever the meeting was held after I was returned to the board. Most of the talks that I've had over the years dealt with the assistance for first home buyers. And I'm sure Mr. Holland will get into that. He's the go-to man, that's what he does, he works there. He has the information about all the programs and the grants and things like that. But I will just tell you, this consortium, City of Tonton is the lead city. And in the membership, we have Attleboro, Berkeley, Carver, Dyton, Freetown, Lakeville, Mansfield, Middleborough, North Attleboro, Norton, Plainville, Rainham, Seekonk, and Tonton. And I believe Freetown was the newest member. And in order for us to meet, we have to have a quorum. So Mr. Holland is going to tell you about the program and the offerings in addition to first-time home buyers. I've mentioned that before, when I got involved way back when, I think the amount of money for assistance was ten thousand dollars. It's twenty-five thousand dollars now. Obviously, there's a number of qualifications and financial reviews that take place. But that money can be used for closing costs, down payment assistance. And there have been people in this town who were fortunate enough to take advantage of it. So I'm going to ask Jim Holland, a host, I'm going to say, an old Dyton guy, I don't mean old, old, I mean, I'm a resident. And he's going to tell you about GATHIC. And if we can get the little thumb drive I brought to work later on, you'll see some pictures of a project at the former shoe factory in Middleborough that I got to attend and got a few pictures way back when.
Mrs. Gulat, thank you. Mr. Holland, thank you for coming before us this evening.
Good evening.
Affordable housing is becoming a major concern in this town.
Becoming a major concern everywhere. I'm Jim Holland. I am the acting director of the Economic and Community Development Office in the City of Tonton at the moment. We have been running the Greater Attleboro-Tonton Home Consortium since two thousand and four in its inception. It is actually a federally funded program through HUD that allows us to assist low, moderate-income families with a variety of programs. Mrs. Gulat stole some of my thunder, but we, the slideshow I'm going to give you tonight is very quick. It runs like five minutes. It is a quick outline of the programs we have. And then my contact information is on the back page of the packages that you guys have been given. And you're welcome to put that out anyplace necessary and direct people to me if they need assistance in the city. We have assisted a number of people in Dyton. Most of your forty-B projects come through my office for the low income or the affordable units. They get down payment assistance through our office. We have done at least three housing rehab programs here in the town. I know I have been asked about a couple others that did not pan out for some reason. But if there are those that need assistance with housing rehab, we ask that they call me as well and we will go from there. So to get started with the slide, as I said, we started this in two thousand and four. There are fourteen communities involved. The member communities were, as Nancy listed, which includes Dyton, which makes Dyton eligible for our assistance. The City of Tonton is the lead agency for the entire consortium. And all of the consortium processes and programs function through our office. And then we have a core committee that handles how, new development programs and projects. Home ownership is one of the keys that we offer so we can provide down payment assistance for first-time home buyers. That first, that down payment assistance is done as a soft second loan program. It's actually a forgivable grant provided you stay in the residence the correct number of years for the amount of money that we're providing you. You are required to go through both pre- and post-purchase classes to make sure you understand what you're getting into when you buy your first home, financial literacy, home security, upkeep, maintenance, all of that type of stuff. Eligible properties are any one-to-four-family residence. So if you had a first-time home buyer buying a two-family home, that's still completely allowable. Condominium units, cooperatives, combination manufactured housing, or any type of pre-constructed manufactured homes, we do not allow mobile homes to be included in the package. So those cannot be done. But otherwise, if it's a stick-built house, we can look at it. There are minimum and maximum amounts of assistance. Our minimum amount is, by HUD regulation, we are required to provide a minimum of a thousand dollars in assistance. Our maximum amount, we raised a few years back, three years, I believe, to twenty-five thousand dollars instead of ten due to the fact that housing prices were just, unfortunately, became unreasonable for most people and they needed that additional gap in order to solve the problem. The first-time home buyers are also required to attend, as I mentioned, the training classes. And those training classes are conducted through a nonprofit that is affiliated with us called Neighbor Works Housing Solutions. They have offices in about eight locations in the South Shore, including one right in Tonton. And they handle not only all the classes, but they handle actually dispersing our funding as well through the first-time home buyers program. Our housing renovation program, again, it's designed to assist low and moderate-income homes. We can go in and assist with a lot of the major systems within the house. We can look at doing, you know, real basic, major health and safety questions, major health and safety concerns, lead paint abatement, energy efficiency-type stuff, all that type of work. The way the program works is once somebody is qualified, someone from my office will go in, inspect the house, walk through the property with the homeowner, and figure out what corrections need to be made. And at that point, we write a work scope, send it out to bids, the homeowner approves the bid package, and then we pay the contractor for doing the work. That way, there's no work, no funding coming from the homeowner.
What are the restrictions for this, as far as, they have to be first-time homeowners to get this? It could be anybody?
Low mod, they have to be low mod income, less than eighty percent AMI for the region.
That's it.
So for Dyton, it's just for a family of four. Don't want to get this wrong, you haven't looked tonight, have you, Nancy? I think it's like seventy-two grand is eighty percent AMI. So at that point, as long as you're less than that, then we can assist. And we have done, like I said, I know we've done at least three, if not four, here in the town already. So there are eligibility requirements, you have to be the homeowner, you have to occupy the house and it has to be your primary residence. You have to meet the income guidelines and you can't have excessive assets or available equity or liquid assets to actually do the work yourself. Multifamily residences, again, we can do up to four-family units as owner occupied. If the owner lives in the property, it is actually a forgiven loan after twenty years. So if we come in, we fix the house, you stay in it for twenty years from the time I fix it, we write the loan off and you owe me nothing. Apartments, if it's a multifamily unit, any of the rental units, we do lock their rental units to be low-income or affordable rental units. And we will actually lock, do a rent regulatory agreement to lock the rent that they can charge. Investor properties, we can look at properties up to six units for investor-only. Again, we will put housing restrictions, affordable housing restrictions on every one of the units and lock those as being affordable units. And we have some caps based on the number of units and what we're working with as far as what we can provide. The biggest cost we see here in our common usage for, when we come in to fix somebody who has just straight apartment units, is lead paint abatement in these old houses, in these old towns, which can currently get very expensive, unfortunately. Make that go away, Mike?
Yeah, look, I'll just let Joseph phone in.
Nope, gone.
Are you good?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Oh, dude, can I let you go in?
Okay, man, I messed you up, huh?
Hold on, sorry about that. One second, I'm sorry.
Beautiful.
Oh, yeah, like, is that the one you want, Jim?
Yeah, it'll be close enough. I think it's the next one, but we'll go from there. That's it.
Hit that one, there you go.
All right, so income eligibility, like I said, you have to meet the eighty percent AMI guidelines according to HUD. The website that is shown there will tell you what the active, what the active numbers are today. They typically are upgraded, updated, right around twice a year. But if you can take, if you open up that website, that will actually bring you to the page where you can search for Massachusetts, search for Bristol County, and then Dyton falls into the Tonton area. So you'll look for the line that says Tonton, Norton, Mansfield, and then Dyton and Berkeley fall under that same line. So you get the same income allowances that Tonton, Norton, and Mansfield get. Household income is defined as anything that's brought into the house. If your kids live there and they work and they don't pay you rent, I'm sorry, it doesn't matter, their income counts. You know, if you pay all the bills, but grandma lives there, her social security counts. So any household income brought into the residence counts for our purposes, not just what the person on the deed brings in. See, 0% monthly, correct. It's forgivable, it is a forgivable loan. As I said, we forgive it over 20 years. Rent restrictions do apply. Actually, I got ahead of myself on all these slides. What repairs are eligible? Safety and code deficiencies, structural repairs, mechanical repairs. Lead based paint is a requirement of HUD. I have to address any lead based paint if it is found. Electrical and wiring issues, plumbing issues. Weatherization is done as part of the full program. We do not come in and just do, um, blow in insulation. If you need that, there are other agencies out there that will do that for you. Some general maintenance, one of the more common ones between general maintenance and accessibility is what we consider elder care. There are many times that we come in and we need to install either comfort height or high rise toilets or remove old tubs and put in lower rise shower stalls to assist the elder in maintaining the ability to live in their own homes. This was actually a property over in Berkeley that started like that and finished like that. And that's just a basic example of a real simple. That one there was new roofing, new windows, all new doors. We had to reconstruct the front steps because they were broken, falling apart. The lady couldn't get in and out of them. We actually, there's, you can see or you can't see it, but there is a handicap ramp that goes up the side of the house that goes into the back door. And then we did lead paint abatement in that property as well. Not eligible repairs. I don't build additions. I can't touch garages and outbuildings. I don't fix driveways and sidewalks. We don't do landscaping and fences and I will not install your hot tub.
I'm out.
We, we have had people ask, I will not install your hot tub. And any reimbursement for repairs that were done prior to our contract with you, we cannot cover. Housing development. We actually have a program that will assist units, assist developers in building new affordable housing units. It's usually done on fairly large scales. Currently, we are working with the group that is going to convert the Union Block in downtown Taunton. The upper floors of that will become 32 units of affordable housing. We've recently, although it's now, it's, it was pre-COVID, so I guess that's not as recent as it seems. We finished a project down in Middleborough known as Shoe Shop Place where we took the old, um, shoe factory and converted that to residential units. We've done the old Bliss School at Attleboro. We were involved in transferring that one over to affordable units. So we do have funding available if you're looking to convert something here in the town to a large scale affordable unit complex, we can at least talk to your developers and go from there. And actually, before we do that, how do I bring up the other?
The pictures?
The other pictures, yeah, the other slide there.
Hi Jim, Dayton Catholic Middle, we talked about that last year.
Yes, um, Taunton Catholic Middle, or the old, what used to be known as Coil High School is about to become 51 units of affordable housing. Yeah. We actually have another. There you go, that shoe shop right there. So that's one of the ones we'll be working on. This here is the actual Shoe Shop Place from Middleborough. This was the old Shoe Factory, um, right down on Pierce Street.
Yeah, the hours on the side, Jim, oh yeah, with that too.
So that gives you an idea of, of what's there. I mean, they're not, you know, you don't get solid granite countertops and things of that nature, but they are highly efficient and useful units.
That's the community room.
That's, yeah, I was gonna say, that looks like the break room that's downstairs, the, the family room. That's just a typical bedroom setup that was in one of these. These are from when this, that was, this was from the opening, was it not?
Yes.
So.
And the kitchens, I saw kitchens that were both, uh, uh, handicapped accessible and then just regular kitchens. So they provide something for everybody.
Right. So, I mean, this is just typical of the, of the type of units that were installed into that particular property. And then this is our contact information for both myself and for Neighbor Works. If you're interested in the first time home buyers process, then please reach out to us. We're more than happy to explain things to you over the phone. One question we get constantly is, is your application online? No. I want to talk to you first and walk you through everything and explain to you what I can do for your actual property. If we leave our application online, then we'll get flooded with 200 applications and be able to do five, seven of these in a year. So we prefer you actually call in, we go through all the guidelines with you. We figure out if you're gonna meet, or at least appears that you will meet all the income guidelines, what type of work you're looking to have done on the property. And we'll go through the whole program with you, um, before even sending out the application to you to get everything written up in, in paper. It is a federal program, so as you guys are well aware, the paperwork is immense. So that is the one thing that we find is difficult for some of the homeowners, especially with the rehab program, is there's a lot of paperwork involved and because we are trying to prove and verify your income, it's fairly invasive paperwork that requires your bank statements and income statements and things of that nature. So when we ask for it, understand that. And that's what I have. If you have any questions, be happy to take them.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I, I am happy that you did present this to the residents in town. So if anybody's eligible for this program, it's great.
Yeah, we actually, um, we will do this presentation typically, we try to get out to every town at least once a year. I know in the past, we have been actually to the Council on Aging here in the town and, and did the presentation for them. We also, we need to update our brochures, but at one point, the Veterans Office was fully aware of our capacity and they would refer people to us as well. So, you know, we are here, we're more than happy to, to take the phone calls and, and try to help people out.
Thank you, Jim and Nancy.
And if I could, as a prior Dayton resident and 22-year member of your Public Safety Division, I can tell you that you promoted a very sharp individual tonight.
Oh, yes, he is great.
Sad part is I do feel old because I had most of your sergeants on the five and six-year-old soccer teams, but, you know.
Actually, I do have three questions.
Absolutely.
What are your funding sources?
HUD.
Strict, totally.
Strictly HUD.
They give you criteria that you must follow and the awards. Who makes the board determination HUD or do you?
On what? They provide, the program, the home program has a binder about that thick of rules and regulations that we have to follow.
So who, who says you qualify? You?
Our office, yes.
Okay.
Yes, but the qualification is you have to meet the income guidelines and then you have to meet, you know, what we're looking for to be done with the house and that type of stuff.
Do you coordinate with developers?
For
Example?
New construction, yes, if they're doing new affordable units, we will talk to them. It really, one of the problems we have with developers and there are other funding sources out there for affordable units, both HUD, state, other federal sources and a number of other things. The problem we run into with our funding source with the home program is we have fairly stringent timeframes to spend our money. And a lot of the larger affordable housing programs, affordable housing projects go through what's known as the one stop process up at the state. And that one stop process involves low income tax credits and low income housing tax credits and historic tax credits and a number of other pieces of pie. And that drags things out for five, six, seven years. And that messes up my funding source because we have a timeframe that we need to spend our money on. So like the Union Block project that I just mentioned in Taunton, that has been on our books for almost seven years. And we've had to keep coming back to them and saying, okay, I've got to take funding away because I've got to spend it and we had to go spend it somewhere else. And then the next year would come along and they would say, okay, well, you got your new, you know, and your new allocation of funding in. Can we have the hundred grand you took away from me on this end, can I have it back again? They're finally getting close to where they're ready to close and we think that one's going to go through hopefully between now and June. So, but yes, we do have a lot of regulations that we have to follow.
Now, we have approximately 140B units in the pipeline, if you will. Still a ways off in building those units. But unlike Taunton that has an economic development office, who in Dayton handles the coordination with the developers in Dayton?
That's a, that's a very timely, that's a very timely, uh, subject. We, um, we actually, like, uh, like, as Jim, um, as Jim mentioned, we, like, actually the Commonwealth now has a one stop process where, so, so, yeah, they act, they actually incentivize, like, actually infrastructure funding. Oh, you could go along with these housing projects as well. So actually the Highway Superintendent and I, we met with, uh, you know, we met with, uh, we met with the local engineering firm a few weeks ago. So, yeah, so, yeah, so you have to actually make sure that as we consider, so, and, so, and as, so, so, as the, the zoning board, uh, so, yeah, considers a potential 40B. So like if any, so like we're actually looking to plan, so, yeah, so, yeah, the area infrastructure needs. So we have the ability to coordinate all that with the, so with the area infrastructure needs so of a potential project as well. Like in terms of who actually is, oh yeah, who's actually keeping track of our 40B census? Oh, you know, like, oh, in the units, oh, you know, like, as, so, so as an affordable unit does actually come up for sale, oh, you know, that is something, oh, yeah, that actually raised, was raised, um, as an issue in the last week. Which we, um, I, this week, I have reached out, I reached out to Attorney Margaret Mitchell and also to the Chair of, uh, the Zoning Board as well to make sure we have a process. So, so you have to deal with that. So if and when we have those units potentially turning over, oh, you know, we have a, we have a, so we really have a systemic way to deal with that. And, and, uh, and, uh, so we're not, like, as a town reacting every time that happens either.
If I can add on to that. A lot of your 40Bs, the 40B process goes through the state as well. So DHCD is aware of how many units are being indicated or listed as affordable units. And DHCD in many cases will track not only the affordability period of those units, but who purchased them, what the discounted rate was. And there is a long-winded algebraic formula on how to calculate that when they resell. Because you can't sell them for more than what the differential is between the original purchase price and the market rate price. You have to take that and calculate it up and then back off the, it's, it's ridiculous. But their DHCD is the answer to, I believe, the question you're asking. They have a lot of those answers. And it will depend on whether they have reached out to other groups to handle the lotteries or handle the dispersment of those affordable units. The, one of the groups around here that used to do it quite often was a group called South Shore Housing. They would actually handle a lot of the, um, lotteries and that thing, that, to get those units sold off. South Shore Housing was actually purchased by the group that we use, Neighbor Works, which is why on their website it says Neighbor Works SSH. That's Neighbor Works South Shore Housing, which used to be over in Kingston, but, um, they've now combined. They've gone through like three different variations of the firm, but they've picked up a lot of the smaller groups that handle that information. So many times, like I said, we're aware of or get notified if there are affordable units and a 40B coming up. Because when they reach out to Neighbor Works, Neighbor Works handles our funding. And then Neighbor Works will tell us, hey, we got five affordable units coming up in Dayton. Okay. You know, they have all the rules, they have the regulations, they handle that process, that, that mortgage package for us because it's too complicated for us to deal with, you'd have to specialize in it. So they handle that for us and then they will handle the actual down payment assistance, making sure that the purchasers qualify. And then again, if it's resold, they turn around and they go through the algebraic equation to understand what the sale price, the new sale price can be and what the new buyers have to be for income guidelines to buy that unit.
Thank you. Mr. Malin, I was wondering, is this something that DDIC could help in the coordination?
So, uh, 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 but like, I actually believe that right now it's more of a ZBA issue, yes. So, so, yeah, the DDIC, uh, like in, uh, like in the existing enabling statute, oh, yeah, like for DDICs across the state. Oh, 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 but like, oh, but like a more focused on economic, is it a more focus on economic and industrial development? Oh, yeah, like in the housing, so the housing element hasn't actually made it in to the DDIC enabling legislation as of yet, or the enabling law as of yet. So the DDIC, so it really doesn't have anything to do with housing by, so, uh, by the, uh, so by the state statute.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. My last question, how do you select your contractors? You mentioned we do installation, weatherization.
We hire only fully licensed, um, and insured general contractors. As far as any of the subs, plumbers, electricians and stuff, that's up to them. Because if something does go wrong, I only want to yell at one person. And we will entertain anybody that's interested in bidding on the project.
So they would contact you with your Taunton office?
Correct. We have a list in my office pre of, pre-approved, pre-qualified people of about 51 contractors. But on any given day or any given project, we're more than happy to look at anybody else that is interested in bidding on the job. All they have to do is be licensed and insured to our standards.
Thank you, thank you. Was there any further questions? I really appreciate this, I'm sure as.
So their meetings come in for posting and we post them out there. Depending upon where we are in the year, they hold hearings. We've had Zoom hearings recently, uh, depending on where we are in the budget year. And again, depending on what's, what's being worked on, we would have more frequent meetings. Like sometimes we were having monthly meetings, other things kind of, you know, got quiet. But, uh, the meeting, as I say, they're posted. And when I get information, um, I can give it to Karen just so you know what's going on. But, uh, But we're out there.
And, and so the public will know Mrs. Gulaj's role in this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you are the Board of Selectmen representative to the Greater Attleboro Taunton-
Yes.
-Home Consortium.
And I don't think I missed a meeting.
Thank you.
Because quarrels are always a problem, but, yeah, so. And Jim has provided information before. Like you said, we have brochures and they're doing new brochures, whatever. But he's offered all of the communities his services to come and do this. So when you asked about it, I thought, I got to volunteer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Next on the agenda is public input. I don't see anyone in Zoom land this evening, and also, there is no one present. So with that being said, we will go on to announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Please note that the townwide parking ban is still in effect through April 1st, 2023. No person shall park a motor vehicle on any street between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 AM. The Town of Dayton's Food Bank Distribution will be held next on March 18th, 2023, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue, the lower level. Dog licenses are available in the Town Clerk's office for all dogs who reside in Dayton. You must present a valid rabies certificate at the time of licensing. Please license your dog, it is the law. And just so the public knows, if you're 70 years old or older, I'm one of those, your license, your dog license is free. Keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Next on the agenda is Selectmen Report. Mr. Pacheco, could you go first, please? Because I've got quite a bit.
I want to go very quickly because the Agricultural Commission did not meet yesterday. They're going to meet next Tuesday now.
Thank you.
So they've rescheduled, so I don't have a report for you.
I, I do have a request of the Agricultural Commission. I was speaking to Stacy Ferry on Saturday. And we are having some issues with chickens in Tremont Street and Forest Street in Dayton. And she said that the Agricultural Commission is working on some regulations. Please, by the fall, could we have something in place?
Yes, if not, so, no, I mean, we think, some people free-range their chickens, which is okay, but what we've discussed is you've got to free-range them on your property, not on somebody else's property. I had a, I used to free-range my chickens. I don't do it now because of bird flu. But my rooster got out and went and told my neighbors, yeah, they're, they're very nice, but it took me an hour to catch, it went over a six-foot fence, took an hour to catch the chickens. So I wouldn't want somebody's chickens coming on my property. So I understand the residents' concern about that.
Thank you very much.
We are addressing that.
First item that I have under Selectmen's Report is from the Town Clerk. And nomination papers were due last Friday. And as a result, the following candidates are running for elected position in the April 8th election. For Housing Authority, Adele Carlin. For Planning Board, Robert Woods. For Sewer Commission, Robert Woods. For Selectmen, Nicole Mello. For the Public Library Trustee, Ronald J. O'Connor. And also running for Library Trustee is Andrew J. Hart. For School Committee, three-year term, Donna Burdose. School Committee, three-year term, Eliza Kucha. School Committee, three-year term, Timothy Toolman. Two of the three will be elected. For Town Moderator, William Moore. Board of Assessors, Eric Easterday. Dayton Rehoboth Regional School Committee, for a one-year term, Christopher Andrade. And Park and Recreation, Lindsay Waller. Regarding the Dayton Water District, at their last meeting, they still have not elected a superintendent. And currently Greg Olson is acting as superintendent. The negotiations between the Somerset Water District and the Dayton Water District continue without an agreement. However, I was informed today that the, this issue is an election issue for the Board of Selectmen race that will be decided in April. In regards to the Main Street project, things are progressing ahead of schedule. They are in the process of tying in homes to the main line. And I've also seen National Grid working on some of the poles as they will be moving them. The Water District has asked people not to move the stakes that are orange on both sides of the pole as that indicates poles that will be moved and the distance that they will be moved on the property. The next item that I wanted to say a bit about is the school district. Dayton Elementary School received a grant award recently for academic excellence, and they should be commended for that. And the school district voted on a tentative agreement of $50 million budget. However, they have said that they will try to reduce that by 1.7 million. And what I've said to them is that we will hold them to that. If not, we will make some cuts. With that being said, I have nothing further on the agenda in regards to the School Committee for this evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Mullen, Town Administrator Report.
Yeah, yes, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the topic of the fiscal year 2024 budget, we are in full budget planning mode. And we are working every day to, to compile the departmental budgets that were submitted to my office and the Office of the Town of Collins daily this month. And we will have everything ready to go when the, for a presentation and, and for the beginning of budget reviews. I believe on March 16th, I believe we're starting the budget process with the FinCom, yeah, as well. So we've been so extremely busy crunching, crunching numbers and figures for that. Oh, you know, as we mentioned, going back to the end, to the end of November, we do expect the fiscal year 20, the fiscal year 24 budget to be a very challenging year. Oh, 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 but we're looking, like, at the educational, like, in the school budgets that are coming in. And, 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 based on the revenues, oh, you know, the year-over, the year-over-year new revenues that we have, we do expect, oh, you know, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, a very limited revenue, oh, oh, you know, funding position to really be affecting how we plan forward, like, in FY 20, in FY 24 and beyond as well. So we are continuing, so we are continuing our diligent attention on that. I do have more positive news. I actually mentioned that the first part of the calendar year, that we have been working, we've been working to try to implement and have built the municipal, the municipal fiber line that we had, that we had funded through a grant last summer. We actually finally heard, we finally heard back from National Grid last week. And they had, they have actually proposed a draft contract, oh, you know, that, oh, oh, will allow us to actually move forward to implement the grant. However, the contract will, however, the contract will require, like, what National Grid calls make-ready fees and, and to deal with the, to deal with the existing, to deal with the existing infrastructure on the, on the roughly 170 poles that go from the area of Dunkin' Donuts, like, all the way down to the area of Main Street. And so, so we are, so we are now working, oh, yeah, to go through the proposed agreement with National Grid. And I will have, and I will have an update on that with, with some recommendations by our next meeting on March 8th. And, and that is all I, and that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Regarding that National Grid project.
Yes.
Is Mr. Gales involved in that?
Uh, uh, but he isn't because of the project itself doesn't actually involve any of, rather, relocation of poles, like, it really deals with the, oh, yeah, the engineering of the infrastructure, like, on top of the poles.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Mullen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any old business?
No.
No? New business? We have a request to appoint Paul Reynolds as an Associate Member of the Conservation Commission. I have a letter from Charles Mellow, member of the Conservation Commission. At our February 16th meeting, we voted to approve Paul Reynolds as an Associate Member of the Conservation Commission, and we'd like the Board of Selectmen to approve his membership. Are there any questions?
No.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Paul Reynolds as an Associate Member of the Conservation Commission.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall, it's an aye. I already spoke to Mr. Reynolds and told him that he needed to see the clerk to be sworn in. Review, discuss, and act facilities request, Dayton Historical Society. There will be no live music, there will be no concession sales, and it is open to the general public, and there will be no admission fee. This will be March 26th, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Are there any questions about this request of Old Town Hall, to use Old Town Hall, by the Dayton Historical Society?
No, I don't have any.
I'm a member of the society, so I probably can't vote on this.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve this request by the Dayton Historical Society to use Old Town Hall on March 26th.
Make that motion.
I will step down his chair to second it. All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
Can I just?
Aye.
Make sure that they requested the fee be waived.
Right, it's on the application.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll get that.
Yeah.
I entertain a motion to approve this request.
Can I make that motion?
I will step down his chair to second that motion. All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
I'll abstain.
Chairman Hall, it's an aye, it passes. I will entertain a motion to waive the fee charged to the Dayton Historical Society for the use of Old Town Hall.
Make that motion.
I will step down his chair to second it. All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
I'll abstain.
Chairman Hall, it's an aye, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is review, discuss, and act on the Town Administrator's evaluation. What I'd like to do, if the Board is amenable, amenable to it, is to read the summary evaluation that was completed as a result of the, each member of the Board of Selectmen submitting their individual evaluation and to Human Resources Department, Ms. Karen Brady. And each member also met with Town Administrator Mike Mullen to discuss their individual evaluation. My understanding, for the public record, that the summary evaluation is, correct me if I'm wrong, open to the public?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman, yes, it is a public document, yes.
Regarding leadership and staff effectiveness, Mr. Mullen mostly exceeded expectations and/or achieved in the areas of establishing direction, delegating responsibility, and motivating employees. Comments included that he is fair and treats everyone with respect. He consistently provides his team with resources and training needed to complete tasks and always uses the talents of the department heads to their full potential, and his team consistently exceeded expectations. One member indicated that Mr. Mullen has the makings of a strong leader and is encouraged to speak with confidence at meetings to garner the respect and attention he deserves from team members. Before I move on to the second of the eight criteria, does anyone have any additional Next is planning and organizing. The Board felt that Mr. Mullen exceeded in all areas of planning and organizing. All E, which is excellent ratings, were given in the areas of developing effective strategies, anticipating problems, setting priorities, staff involvement, and follow-through, with one member indicating an achieve, achievement in utilizing people's skills. Board members felt that Mr. Mullen has the ability to distinguish what is important on his to-do list, is always informative and well-prepared, is inherently aware of his responsibility to the Board and to the residents of Dayton. He always has the end result in mind and involves the Selectmen and Town Departments in all aspects of the planning and decision-making process. He effectively achieves goals by planning ahead, uses all tools at his disposal, and using his team to its full potential. Are there any additional comments?
No.
Communicating and community relations. They, in the evaluation process of all the criteria, there were, there was only one achieved, all the rest were excellent. The ratings reflected excellence in this category, with comments reflecting Mr. Mullen's ability to keep the Board and the residents informed, and his outstanding writing abilities, oral and visual presentations were excellent. He bridges the gap between departments and makes everyone more productive while having the ability to respectfully and gracefully disagree with others. One of the things that I might add is that Mr. Mullen has an exceptional ability to mediate disputes between different groups and different people, both town employees and residents, and their concerns with the community. Does anyone have any further comment on item three? Item four, problem-solving, innovations, and decision-making. All were excellent. Mr. Mullen received all exceeded ratings in this category, with one board member stating that Mr. Mullen is a great problem solver who weighs pros and cons in any situation and regularly solicits input from the board. He uses the expertise of others and has the ability to elicit cooperation to achieve goals. He works under constant pressure and uses his time and others efficiently. He always considers the best interests of the town and costs when making decisions. When he says he will do something, he does it. Are there any comments about that? I will add, Mr. Mullen's work ethic is beyond exceptional, and the amount of time and dedication truly show a love for the community. Budget and financial management. Comments included that Mr. Mullen is well-aware of budgets and levy limits. He was commended, he was commented that budgeting was one of Mr. Mullen's strong points, and that he has developed a very good budget process in which expectations are well-communicated to departments. Mr. Mullen does an outstanding job of being aware and applying for grants. He is well-aware of budgeting and needs of the town and consistently keeps the town and the Board of Selectmen informed of needed capital improvements. In the area of budget and financial management, are there any additional comments? I would like to add, Mr. Mullen brings to this community a vast level of experience, both at the state level, at the county level, and local level, having worked in the State House, having worked for the city of Brockton, and having worked for Norfolk County. Customer service and service quality. In this category, Mr. Mullen received overwhelming, exceptional ratings by all board members. One member commented that Town Hall has a better reputation since Mr. Mullen arrived. He is well-respected in the community due to his commitment to customer service, and he provides top-notch professionalism in dealing with resident complaints. Mr. Mullen has a cheerful personality and infectious sense of humor. He leads by example and always shows respect to the public. Are there any additional comments?
No.
Next, number seven, personal professional organizational integrity. In this category, all members rated him as exceptional. One member commented that Mr. Mullen was one of the most honest and ethical persons that I have known. We are lucky to have him. Michael has a professional reputation, is well-respected in the community, and has made few decisions without due process. Are there any additional comments in that area? I will add, both at meetings at the State House and the MMA Conference, the views of Mr. Mullen aren't just by the Board of Selectmen. I heard exceptional praise for him at the State House, for his work and years at the State House, and also at the MMA Conference from community and other, selectmen and other community leaders. Mike Mullen is truly respected throughout the Commonwealth, and also in his role as a member of the Massachusetts Municipal Association. Eight, cross-departmental organizational management. Again, each member of the Board of Selectmen rated him excellent. Mr. Mullen holds monthly department meetings to inform expectations and respects his department head's input. Most decisions are not made without first hearing and considering concerns and options. Are there any additional comments from members of the board? Goals for the upcoming year, prior year accomplishments. Mr. Mullen has managed Dyton Clerical Union Wage and Classification Study to completion. He has built successful capital planning documents, identified and helped to advance the acquisition improvements for long-term library solution at 207 Main Street, secured an additional $300,000 in state grant funding for municipal fiber and town water district efficiency grants, led newly established financial team to strengthen fiscal planning and diligence in budget development process, has built and strengthened report and working relations with the Dyton, Rehoboth Regional School District officials, and I might add, has helped immensely to bring a closer relate, working relationship between the Board of Selectmen and the town of Dyton and Rehoboth. That has become extremely important in making closer and better relations with the Dyton, Rehoboth Regional School District, and has successfully secured federal funding for a very expensive bridge project in the town that I might add brought $2.75 million to the town of Dyton. His efforts with Congressman Archon Claus should be commended. Going forward, the goals for the next 12 to 24 months include, the town administrator undertake to improve the internal departmental operations, land or studies or analysis that will be conducted in advance of project, of a project objective. Examples of planning and leadership, providing professional development to staff to increase effectiveness, effectiveness and efficiency in the delivery of product by December 15th. In advance of the finance committee's review, projecting increase a new cost and then planning how to account for those costs, otherwise how to shift resources to offset additional costs. Research, department operating systems and software programs, and plan for necessary upgrades. While a project's objectives may be to prepare, prepare for and implement a system upgrade into implementing of gas B-34 Arctic requirements and producing the related report by January 1st. Complete the bidding and renovation specs for a particular facilities or ground project by May 1st. In addition, Mr. Mullen will make the Board of Selectmen more aware what the town's year-to-date budget position is at a monthly selectmen's meeting. Two, lead the drafting and development of a time, town-wide financial policy, and lead drafting and development of a town employee personnel policy. Fourth goal, pursue opportunities to generate solar revenue at our transfer station and any other applicable town-owned property. And five, lead efforts in collaboration with town departments and applicable boards committees to develop the final oppa allocation proposal. The overall evaluation, we are pleased with the work that town administrator Mike Mullen has done for our town. It was the best decision the town of Dyton has made to hire him. Thank you. Are there any additional comments by the members of the board? With that being said, I will entertain a motion to accept the evaluation of town administrator Mike Mullen.
I just want to comment before we make a motion. I do agree that this was the best decision that the town has made. You two weren't on the board when we decided to hire Mr. Mullen. He had a great interview, had great experience. He sat up here, not in Dyton, but as a selectman, so I was looking, I was happy to see that as part of his resume. The public doesn't know how busy this gentleman is. We know, we get the texts, we get the emails on the weekend and at night, and I wouldn't want a job, he thrives on that, though. So I'm very pleased that we, this town has Mike Mullen as our town administrator, and I look forward to continuing to work with him, well, at least until April 8th. But I, I still will be somewhat involved with the town and with Mr. Mullen. I am very pleased with his work. If we've ever had a disagreement, he's a gentleman, I'm a gentleman, we have adult conversations, and we seem to come together in the end, and he's, he's very thorough in his work. I am mostly impressed with his plans as far as the budget goes, his involvement with that, to keep us always informed as to what's going on in the town money-wise. He's always conscious of what the expenses are in town and what the future. We look at what's happening today, he looks down the road, way down the road for the town residents, so I just want to reiterate how fortunate we are to have Mr. Mullen here as our, and your anniversary's coming up?
Yeah, in two weeks, March 8th. Since, since, you know, the beginning date, so, and it's been.
So we're fortunate to have Mr. Mullen. I'll make the motion then to approve this evaluation that we have for town administrator Mike Mullen.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pacico?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Mr. Mullen?
So, no, thank you, thank, and, and honestly, like, and, so like, so like, all of you know, everyone at home probably knows that, so, yeah, so, so, so sometimes I can be like a man of a very few words, and it's just, oh, you know, after two years, it's just very humbling to, oh, you know, oh, you know, have earned really the trust and the faith and the confidence of everyone in town that I have, oh, you know, like, it's something that, oh, you know, like, I know that I have to continue working to earn, oh, you, oh, you know, now do that, like, I love Dyton, I love the community, oh, you know, we're doing, and we've been over these last two years working to address a number of challenges, oh, you know, oh, we have small challenges, we have big challenges, oh, you know, one, oh, you know, one thing that, oh, you know, like, I've always re, oh, you know, like, I've been proud of all the last two years, oh, you know, like, oh, you, oh, is that we just don't address, so those challenges in a bubble, we work with people, we work with our residents, oh, you know, we take feedback and input from our residents, oh, you know, like, and, you know, like, in the last two years, we've been really doing some, so, so I think some incredible things. We, so, yeah, we all really know and I will, the challenge is looming, oh, you know, but I believe that we're gonna be able to deal with those in the very thoughtful and respectful and careful way, you know, that we, oh, you know, have addressed, oh, you know, can prioritize initiatives and projects over the last two years, so, oh, yeah, and, like, I'm in love with Dyton, oh, you know, I mean, I love the work, I have a passion for it, you know, like, I mean, everyone, like, our team from Karen and Ian and our office, oh, you know, oh, oh, yeah, to, like, all of our department heads, to all of our employees, so, yeah, so, the job of, the job of a town administrator, the role, oh, you know, as a town administrator, like, I can't do anything I do in a bubble, oh, you know, oh, yeah, so, yeah, and it's really because of the faith, the support, the confidence, oh, you know, that I have from our employees, from Karen and Ian, oh, 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 you know, like, from you three gentlemen and the boards before you, oh, yeah, like, I am just incredibly humbled and blessed, and I just, so, yeah, thank you every day for the opportunity that you continue to give me, and, you know, like, I promise that tomorrow and the day after, and the day after that, I'll work as hard as I am right now for you and the town. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
It is a pleasure.
Thank you.
And we will continue to go forward, and I'm looking forward to many years of you being a part of the town of Dyton.
Thank you, and me as well. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public input. Are there any additional comments? I don't see anyone in Zoom land. Lauren, unless you have any further comments, we will move on to the approval of the warrants.
So I'll make a motion to the Board of Selectmen approve the following warrants from February 1st, 2023. And 33C-23, $2,842,314.25.
Was that February 1st or February 15th?
February 15th.
Where do I?
My agenda says the 15th.
15.
It's type O on yours.
As, do we also have warrants for the 8th, too, then?
Oh, the 22nd.
22nd?
This.
That's the old one.
Is that what the paper says?
Yes, the first and the 8th is what I have.
We have to change the title of headings.
But do you, are the numbers correct?
I believe they are.
They must be, because I don't.
Well, you have the warrants for the 22nd, why don't we see if those are, those are correct?
34A-23 is in the amount of $114,319.72.
Okay, that's, those figures are, and that's the 22nd, and the prior one would have been the 15th, then?
Yes.
So if I could amend my motion, the figures are correct, but the date is February 15th, 2023.
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacico?
Aye.
Warrant dated February 22nd, 2023, I will need a motion to approve.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the warrants that February 22nd, 2023. 34C-23, $18,119.79. And 34D-23, $39,622.51.
I have a motion, do I have a second, to approve the warrant dated February 22nd, 2023?
A second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Karen? Mr. Pacico?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Acknowledgements. With that being said, any further correspondence? I have before me approval of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health joint meeting minutes of January 12, 2023. Are there any questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacico?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Before I make the closing announcement, I just want to remind people that going forward, the Board of Selectmen meetings will be 6:30 p.m., okay? We will be going into executive session, we will not be returning this evening from executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including the town administrator and the fire chief. Also, under executive session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body, and the chair so declares, he so declares, in regards to Dyton Highway Employee Local 1701, AFS CME, Ask Me Counsel 93.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacico?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you, and have a good night.
Night.